Meeting come to order.
Pledge of allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to the Upper Chautauqua Township Board of Commissioners Caucus meeting, November 3rd, 2022. George, can you do roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Baraco.
Here.
Commissioner Goryoso.
Here.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Here.
Commissioner Neary.
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker.
Here.
Lisa Catania. Paul Hughes. And myself, George Needles, present.
Thank you. We'll be opening up to the citizens' comments by telephone tonight first. By dialing in, the number to dial in is 571-748-4021. That number again, the dial in is 571-748-4021. Enter in 682-367-592-POUND. After you dial again, you enter the number 682-367-592-POUND. If I mute your phone, dial *6. After I'm muting your phone, please state your name and address and begin your comment. You will have two minutes to speak and then be placed back on mute after your comment. Phone lines will be open for a few minutes. Big note, there was no citizen comments by phone tonight. We'll open up the citizens' comment here tonight, starting at the first row. If you have anything that want to come up to the podium, state your name, your address, and telephone number if you'd like us to get back to you. Yeah.
Hi, my name is Julia Fremuth. I live on 2122 Chiaav. And I would like you guys to get back to me on this. My number is 610-716-7653. So I talked to one of you earlier about this. I'm here in memory of my brother-in-law, Nicky. He passed away from a fentanyl overdose last year around this time. And I want to know what you guys can do for us to raise awareness. I don't know if you guys can get like a township meeting or like a township event. As you know, one person passes from fentanyl every 11 minutes, and there's not a lot of resources out here right now. Not a lot of mental health psychiatrists, or even places at all that you can turn to. Krozer's shutting down. Their crisis center is not available to us right now. There's a lot of people that can be saved. And souls that we can keep off of the drugs if we start speaking up now. There's only so much I can do carrying Narcan as one person. What can you guys offer us? Thank you.
It is a problem in Delaware County, the whole country, not just here. I did lose a niece the same way.
I'm sorry for that.
We, as you stated, Narcan, you have it. A lot of people have it at home. Our police department has it. The fire department has it, EMS. We, as a township, don't have any resources to have that, what you're looking for right here. I do not know what the police department could do on helping. The chief is here tonight. We do have your phone number if you want to sit down one-on-one.
Yes.
It doesn't mean that the township would not have open arms to have some kind of a community advocate night or something of awareness or whatever. It's always a good thing that way. Unfortunately, the hospitals, as you stated, are closing their crisis center. It makes it hard for the police department. The police department, it gives them a difficult timeout there too because they don't have the resources. I really think sitting down with our police chief and his assistant, the sergeant, there might be some ideas, might be some other avenues with the county that we don't have right here with us. But that doesn't mean the county and the police department and us can't venture something in the near future.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
And my brother-in-law Nicholas is actually with us tonight. I have him in this little necklace, earned necklace. Are you guys having any kind of influence with any events at the high school?
We, as a township, have resource officers at all, at the high school and the middle school. I do not know what their programs are. That's the question you would sit down with the police department and say, hey, what are we doing in the schools? We, as a township, sponsor our police force in the schools with a joint effort with the school district. That might be another avenue to work with them in the school district besides us. So there's different areas to go. We just don't have the answer here tonight for you. Are we open for any kind of open forum? Whether it's this building, the other building we own, just to have the county or whoever come out? Sure. I mean, there's education on that. Unfortunately, if we save one, that's a good thing, but it happens all the time. I will say it has quiet down here in Upper Chai. Thank goodness. I probably shouldn't have said nothing. But we have your number. We'll have the chief reach out to you. Maybe there's some ideas out there that we don't have, but they have.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. And thank you for doing what you're doing. As I said, we're sorry for the loss, and it happens every, still. If you want to make a statement, you can make a statement. Just name your state your name and your address and
My name is Joan Casher. I'm the mother of Nicholas Casher, who died November 25th of 2021, ever overdose of fentanyl. He was found in my bedroom, in my bed, dead. His face was purple and his lips were blue. And a rigor moris on my son's body. I don't want another parent going through the hell that I'm going through. I would have buried my son at the age of 22, who would never marry, never have his own kids, never live his life, never go to college. He wanted to be a teacher and music and help educate kids. He won't have that chance now.
And I think
Because he's not here to do that. I don't want another mother going through what I'm going through right now.
And we appreciate that. And I think your niece is in the right direction to to try to do a little better, even if it's just a little bit. Somebody, I mean, the advocate through the schools, through the townships, not just this township.
I had done CPR on my son, but it was too late. I couldn't save him. But I tried to.
Real quick, yes.
I'm back again. I know Kensington has the Kensington project. Is that something that you guys would be able to do here?
I do not know. We're not familiar with that.
They're basically a nonprofit that hands out clothes, food, and hygiene products.
You could talk to the chief about, and we have Delaware County Community Action here in town. I don't know if they have any resources. We could talk to them to see if they do any programs for everybody, so.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Is there any other public comment out there for tonight that's in the audience? If not, we will move, we have a small presentation for 2032-2034 Locust Street for a reverse subdivision, subdivision presentation.
Yeah, good evening. My name's Dave Damon. With H. Goer Damon Associates, we prepared the plans for 2032-2034 Locust Street. The subdivision, reverse subdivision plan proposes to reconfigure two existing lots. They're from an old plan of Pleasant View. And they're two 50-foot wide lots that formerly fronted on Locust Street, which kind of got cut off when I-95 was constructed. So the lots are separated here by a lot line that runs east and west, parallel to 95. And the lot closest to 95 here is irregular. It was made non-conforming when 95 was constructed. The subdivision proposes to reconfigure the lots so that they front Lot 1 and 2 on Pleasant Avenue. So it would split them to run with a line perpendicular Pleasant Avenue. And the we received a review letter from Catania Engineers. We all, we agree to, we'll comply with all the items in that letter. Also, I reviewed the resolution. And I find that is acceptable also. I don't know whether you have any questions as to anything that's in the letter or what's proposed on that plan, but I'd be happy to answer those.
Anybody have anything? Of course. Good. Now, is there, you have two separate lots now?
Well, it's two separately, two separate
But you're trying to get the non-conforming into a conforming lot to make it fit.
They're more conforming the way they're reconfigured.
So there is, was some discussion at the planning commission meeting that that lot that is in the interior lot, that lot potentially will be changed to create a that launch. One of the comments, one of the conditions of the resolution is that the addresses to those two properties be revised because they're actually fronting Pleasant Avenue. So we can get rid of an issue that we have with emergency services if that is actually reverted to, or intended to a home.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure that the voices of the neighborhood. Also, if that garage is changed and, like, they will just come in for a grading permit and a building permit, once this is approved, we will need a approval for the addition of those, something, authority. Just things to be noted as part of the sub.
Is there improvements on both lots now or just the one? Meaning there's sewer water and all that?
There's no, that, on the lots currently. And I don't know whether the board would consider that we'd be looking at putting in herbs on sidewalks. But again, yeah.
That's an ordinance, I have.
But that'll be done now.
Anybody else have any questions? We thank you very much, Mr. Damon.
Thank you.
We're moving along with our professionals. We'll start with the engineer report. Lisa Catania, Catania Engineer.
The agenda is 2022 Detour Memorandum of Understanding. As everyone's aware, section 103 of the Conchester is to be improved, updated. There is work that's going to be done that will need road closures. And some of the detours, there's a list, if you want to take a look. There's a list in my, in my report section of the various detours. There's also maps. The maps, because they're so small, are difficult to read. But there is a list, if you go to the actual memorandum of understanding, there's a list of the streets that are public streets, township-owned public streets, that they'd like to utilize as part of the, of the detour. The other, there's another list that's on page, so page 2 of the Benish letter that's in your packet, that notes the roads that will be closed and when they'll be closed. If you recall, Penn Doc consultant Benish had sent all this information. It was vetted through all the emergency services and other departments, so we could get answers to questions. All of those questions have been answered to some degree. Some of the questions have to wait until the contractor has his actual schedule, once it's let, or put out a schedule. Al Tom Sully from Benish did a pretty good job of explaining each one of the detours and what the contractor will be responsible for, once they start, prior to starting work. What they would have to do as far as communication with not only the township, but other emergency services. That's the first thing that we're going to ask that the board consider the approval to sign the memorandum of understanding. Because it is township-owned, the roads typically, detours will end up projects are done. We are only on state-owned roadway, so we have to do this memorandum of understanding.
Now, when the wear and tear of our roads and stuff, were they responsible? I mean, if there's any construction going through the detours? And how long, how long do they think the detour is going to last?
The detours are pending various stages. Some early on, on weekend. Others will be of more of a long term. We don't have all of that information, but I believe that, just as we've done previously, we do an evaluation of the roadway prior, keep record, and if there is any issues, and we'll bring those to Benish.
Thank you.
The second thing is the Terrace Circle Basin. This is for information. We do have a contract. We have a reconstruction meeting. This will update the outlet structures and take the sediment out of, out of that particular basin. Scovaccio is proposing to start that construction November 21st. We've asked that he, although it's on township property and there's a pretty big area for laydown, etc., that he put out notifications to the residents around the area, just so they're aware of what's down the lodge. So that will be done. We also, I hinted George when I came in, the Boothland Highlands Stormwater contracts. That project, if we can get everything completed, will be starting, hopefully within the next two weeks. That's what they're shooting for. They have a window and would like to get that project completed. I also have AutoZone. It says bond release. It will be a reduction in their bond. Speaking to Brad in the jet, the punch list is not completed as of yet. And I'm recommending a reduction in the bond of $350,313.50. Their great properties is okay with that, the understanding that they still have items that need to be resolved. That $35,000 that's left in the account is the contingency. So we're still holding enough to get them all completed. We already talked about 2032-34 Locust Street Resolution. And otherwise, I can just report general progress. You have a copy of my report. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Do you have anything?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Just for an update, do we have an update on the Mount Pleasant, the crosswalk? I know we're waiting for the parts to come, and I've received a phone call. I told them I would ask on today.
Yeah, actually, more construction. Who, who has the contract for Boothland Highlands is the subcontractor for Damon on that. We're waiting a number from them to get, to get that moving. So we're probably looking shortly that we should have, have, we changed that piece of, of material from a trench drain that they were waiting for from the area we were talking about. We've changed that design, so they're just a different process.
Okay, so we're not waiting for that piece anymore. We'll totally change it. Okay. All right, thank you. And then my next question will be the community development block grant that is in our packets and the areas that are eligible or highlighted. Do we have any projects in mind? Do you have any that you could email us or, or what? Oh, go ahead.
So we're actually getting ready to hold a meeting with all of the professionals and the departments with that capital improvement project. So we're going to pluck projects out of that capital improvement capital improvement plan, and that's what we'll be presenting to the board. So they'll all be projects that are either something that's been spoken about in the years past and never got completed, or something that came out of one of the plans that we've done. So we'll have a whole list for, for the, before the hearing.
All right, thank you.
So I don't have to say Fifth and McKay? Oh, did I say that? Because I saw it on my list this time. Finally. Sorry it was so out loud. Anybody have anything for the engineer? Lisa, Wawa, where are we at with them in the punch list and the signs? An offense. The insurance guy has his fence up, but Walmart don't have theirs up yet.
So we do not have a schedule for Scott contractors, Propco contractor, to complete the punch list. We are still looking for answers concerning the McKay Avenue puddle. They'd like to place an inlet in the center on McKay Avenue, in the center of the driveway off of McKay, and tie that back into the Wawa system, which means that Wawa would be responsible for that maintenance. I have no problem with the design itself. However, I've asked the question as to why we're putting a Band-Aid on it instead of collecting the water from where it is coming. The contributing watershed is actually the site. So why are we waiting till we get down to? I have not gotten that answer as of yet. I saw this afternoon that Joe Bada had sent me an email asking me where we stand. I have to respond with him.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for the engineer? Now we're moved to the solicitor's report. Mr. Paul Hughes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pierce submitted, is, we're in advance. I'm sure everyone has a copy of it. Mr. Needles asked me to highlight the items listed on the agendas. And to the extent that I can, I certainly will. By the way, so if you do have any questions of any depth, I'm going to defer to Mr. Pierce, who will be here for your business. The is stated in the solicitor's report, Pierce has prepared an advertisement stormwater ordinance, and the 450 Cherry Tree additional use hearing scheduled for 10/2. And we believe that Pierce is attending that as well. Finally, the Health Department, good news. Those court judges indicating that attempt by the county Health Department to take over control of historical municipal functions is, is not weak. So expect that that will develop. It may result in the field and those. Good news so far. If you have any other questions, hear them, write them down, and he can be prepared to answer them if you're
Anything, anybody have anything for the solicitor? Get back to Mike. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Move along to the manager's report.
Good evening, everybody.
Mr. Needles, I forgot, I forgot to tell George Needles. Sorry.
My written report is on file for your review. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me and we can talk through it. There are a couple of items that we need to go through. The first is the preliminary budget. So a balanced preliminary budget has been submitted to the Board of Commissioners with revenues of $14,537,495.70 and expenditures matching at $14,537,495.70. Everybody worked really hard to get this budget balanced, and the preliminary budget is currently balanced. If there was any discussion or anything that would like to be moved around on this, we would need to to do, if it's anything substantial, we would need to do it tonight prior to passing the preliminary budget. So do you want to have that discussion now or wait until you get to the motion and do it through the motion, if there is any?
We could, we could wait to, I mean, I don't think there's
Okay.
They feel pretty good with it.
Great. So that being said, if this budget is accepted, we would be doing a resolution for the tax, setting the tax rate, because there is no increase in the mileage. And we would need to do an ordinance for the trash fee because the proposal is to increase the trash fee by $20, which subsequently is less than what we are, what we've, is less than what the county has increased our dumping fees by over the past two years. So we are still eating a little bit of that, that fee, but we think we can do it because we've got some great efficiencies in that department over the past couple of years. Some things we've done with changing management around, and then I'll talk about something else in just a moment. Community Development Block Grant application hearing. We're going to have to advertise for a hearing. Community development block grant application hearing. We're gonna uh have to advertise for a hearing. Like to do that hearing in December. Like I said, the professionals, myself and the department heads will get together and we'll get you a list of projects um based off of previous conversations of things that have gotten into that capital improvement plan. Uh, we've been asked by the tax collector to pass an act for uh fifty-seven resolution. I put a sample uh that I thought was palatable in uh your binders. Uh, this doesn't need to be done in November, so I'd ask that you start to take a look at that. I'm also going to ask uh uh, Mr. Pierce to take a look at that as well to, to get some more information on that. Um, I would have a little bit of hesitation with some of the stuff I was reading in the act, but I felt that the um the resolution that I found as the model resolution that kind of sums it up pretty well.
You, you said that has to be passed in November?
Does not. It's just, just for um, for reference. Next is the, probably the most exciting thing tonight. We've been working on a trash route study for the past couple of years with SCS engineering. And they have worked it out where they are proposing for recycling two days a week and trash three days a week to pick up the entire town. Recycling would go from being picked up currently every other week to every week recycling. So we're going to now be able to increase our level of service as well as uh develop these more efficient routes. So what you've been given is um copies of the maps that outline where the routes are and what days they'll be picked up. You'll see they're compact contiguous uh areas. They kind of look a little bit like some maps we've seen in the past from some of the exercises we've done here. And um what we are asking from the board is if um, and, and if, if you're willing to do this, we'd like, we have some materials that we'd like to start getting out to, to communicate this change to people. And one of the avenues we think we'd be very successful is giving this uh, uh, out at the polls. So um, I know you can't physically give them out at the polls, but maybe they could be left uh out in front at the location. So if anybody is interested in that, please contact me and I'll be able to give you them. We'll also be doing a bunch of social media blasts, hand delivering items to people's houses. And also using the uh Delco Alert system to notify people. We also have a contingency plan in place for the first three months. In the event that someone misses their trash day or misses their recycling day, we'll still be able to accommodate them. So that's very exciting. I'll continue to work with uh Commissioner Niri and Commissioner Whitaker on the uh library and the R cap uh grant, making sure we get all the items needed for that. One of the items that was left over from uh during COVID that we weren't able to do due to inability to get the cameras was the Chai Avenue and Milver Road uh intersection. Uh, we would like to get that done this year, so I'm going to ask uh for that on the agenda next week. I recently attended a um, a session on a responsible contractor ordinances. So I've given you guys um what the county has recently passed as well as um their ordinance, their resolution and the um, the presentation on it. Um, other municipalities that have them include Darby Township. Ridley Township has one and then a couple of other places. So that's some information for you to digest. Feel free to look through it. It's a lot of information, so I don't think it's anything to jump into. I think it's something to vet out if this is something the board is interested in. I have one escrow release for Horizon Services. I have two, one land development extension for six fifty-nine um Conchester, as well as a withdrawal for six fifty Cherry Tree. Um, the Greenwood Avenue properties, these are properties that the board has discussed about potentially acquiring for open space. Uh, we'll be seeking um, uh, the authority to go ahead and um try to work out a deal for that at the next meeting. Um, and then three forty-three Hamby, so uh the property of three forty-three Hamby was purchased. And the address that was used for the individual who purchased it, they used their old address, which meant their tax bill got sent to their old address and not to their, their new uh house. This is in twenty twenty-one. They did pay the taxes delinquent at the county and, but they did not pay the, the trash, obviously, because it was not out at the county. Um, so they've been back and forth in contact with myself and with M R S. Uh, they would like, uh, they are proposing a, uh, that they would like to pay a smaller amount than what is due and have the liens reduced from their property. My suggestion would be that if the board is interested in this, that it, it be done. I think we, we tell them that they need to pay face, at least face value, right? So if the board could look through that. And then under other, uh, we did receive a request from the library for payment for um the, this, the STEM program that they held here through the summer. Uh, we've reviewed this through the uh, the finance department, the team that we have some more questions before we could recommend this to the board. Uh, there was actually two programs that are mixed together. So in, in trying to dig out the expenses for which is which, it gets kind of difficult. So we're going to reach out to the library this week and try to get that all vetted out. If we can, we may have that item on the agenda for the next month. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anything to be brought to the attention of the manager? Now we're moving along to the commissioners. Uh, Madam Vice President, Nicole Whitaker. Anything to be brought to the attention of Nicole Whitaker? Move along to Commissioner Jurnair.
Thanks, sir. Good evening, everybody. That's the two of you.
George and George.
The um, all the financial bills, uh, the financial records and um, the police report will be available next week. Along with any trash refunds and the list of bills. The only thing I wanted to mention is that I will be meeting with um Lisa Tanya to discuss the Creekside issue that is ongoing with uh some uh runoff behind the newer buildings on the uh twelve uh units that were built. So we'll be trying to come to some resolution on that. And that's all I have.
Anything to be brought to the attention of Commissioner Neri? Now we're moving along to Commissioner Mike Cordios.
Their, their schedule. Uh, sixty-five ninety Chai Chester Highway Main Development. Their, their an extension. Six fifty Cherry Tree Rose, the applicant, as people said, mentioned, your application. And the last two, I'll leave them to note is, we have an application A and an application B. Uh, they are, both applications are, are under review and I believe the decision will be made by January uh, the decision here. That hearing is scheduled for six twenty-two. And I have survey that we had some absolutely months ago.
Anything to be brought to the attention of Commissioner Gordier, sir? Now we're moved to Commissioner Joe Biaco.
Thank you. Um, highway and sanitation, uh, George kind of gave everybody an update on uh what we plan to do after the first of the year with changing the, with the track routes. We have a more detailed report. Uh, we're still having negotiations with their contract. And uh, hopefully we'll have an update soon. So in order, we're still trying to work out uh some details on getting the uh new force main project done. And that's all I have. Unless there's any questions.
You might have anything for Commissioner Biaco? Now we'll move along to my report, short and sweet. Uh, emergency management report isn't on file, is on file. A medic unit and fire marshal hopefully next week. To answer one of the questions from last month, um, when that ambulance report, there is a section in there that shows all the other municipalities that they respond for that month. So if this month I'll forward it over to you, but if you want to look at last month, there's a breakdown of how many chap. Trust me, Bethel, Trainer, Lower Chi, Marcus Hook, and now the City of Chester. So they have them, were broken down besides Upper Chi in that report for us. So other than that, I have nothing else. And does anybody have anything for me? If not, we have.
Do they also show, you said your, the report showed where our ambulance is going?
The response, yes.
To the Does it show anyone else that comes into our town?
No, only ours being dispatched out outside or in town too.
Okay.
I, that was, that was a question I'm, I'm having our guy look into was where's the other unit that's pulling ours into the different towns? And they, they could find that out.
Okay.
We'll see if we could get some kind of report for that. If not, we have uh three motions on uh, on the table here tonight. Uh, Mr. Neri will be reading them and um a lot of it has to do with the preliminary budget that George mentioned and uh, just want to thank everybody that, like George said, that worked hard all the way up to tonight to make sure we have a balanced budget.
Uh, consider a motion adopting the twenty twenty-three Upper Chi Chester Township preliminary operating budget. So move.
Second.
Any questions? Oh, okay.
We can make it in the final. The only, the only suggestion that we made was the one I made earlier to reduce the library from in, instead of a sixteen thousand dollar increase, a six thousand dollar increase, which was almost a six percent increase. So that's line four fifty-six, one forty. And right. But technically it's not significant enough not to just adopt it the way it is and fix it for the final.
Okay.
Then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion authorizing the township manager to advertise the passing of the twenty twenty-three Upper Chi Chester Township preliminary operating budget. So move.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Finally, consider a motion authorizing the township manager to advertise an ordinance setting the trash collection fee for twenty twenty-three. So move.
Second.
Any questions?
What?
It's a twenty dollar raise.
Any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? So ordered. Need a motion to adjourn if that is it. Wait a minute. Uh, yes, I had to make an announcement before we uh, that we did have an executive meeting tonight uh regarding personnel matters. Should have did that at the beginning of it. I thank you. Now I need a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Opposed? Good night. Go Phillies.
Eagles. Are you kidding? Do you see how personal that is? You remember that?